And this evening, we have a quorum, so I'm officially calling this meeting to order on May 26, 2022 at 5:30 PM. The planning board is comprised of volunteers appointed at the discretion of the select board. Our charge is to ensure that the applications that come before us comply with the town's land use ordinance and Rockport Comprehensive Plan. The board must determine whether there is sufficient evidence in the record, which is the material supplied by the applicant, to support a decision to approve the application. This is accomplished by comparing the information in the record to the requirements of the ordinance or statute. And at tonight's meeting, I would like to seat Victoria Condon as a full voting member.
That's not right.
No, I think she's on the plane.
She is already a full.
She's not an alternate.
So you're an alternate member because you requested to be an alternate? So he's got to seat you as a voting member at every meeting.
But that was supposed to take effect next month when my term was up.
Is that what it says?
That's what I was, my idea is. Doesn't matter. I'll be an alternate.
Either way, if you're an alternate, you're seated. If not, we're good.
All right.
Okay.
Before we start, does anyone on the board wish to identify a conflict of interest with the one pre-application that's on the agenda tonight that would make it difficult for you to judge this application fairly and objectively? If so, I ask you, identify these conflicts now.
Yeah, I just want to make the board aware that for my day job, I'm President of United Midcoast Charities, and one of our grantees is the Knox County Homeless Coalition. And so if anybody feels that that represents a conflict of interest, I'm happily, I'd happily step down.
I should identify as well, I'm a board member of United Midcoast Charities, and I guess I would share the same.
Yeah, and just to be, just to clarify, this is about a building project, and United Midcoast Charities as a policy does not fund capital campaigns. So this wouldn't qualify for grants, you know, under the current policy at United Midcoast Charities. So, but we do fund operational expenses, and we're very supportive of Knox County Homeless Coalition and have for many years as one of probably thirty-five to, anywhere from thirty-five to fifty grantees in a given year, so.
So John, could you just explain a little bit about Midcoast Charities? Are any of the organizations represented in the site plan tonight members of Midcoast Charity?
No, there's no membership. United Midcoast Charities is strictly a grant-making fundraising organization. And, and so there's no, there's no membership per se by the grantees. It's a completely independent, it's a decision also that's also made by the board as far as who receives the grants. So I'm not involved in that decision-making process. That's a grants committee and a board decision.
I think we'll get into this more as we go through this, but it would be, I think, better just to understand the financing mechanism of the proposal, like which group is, has the line share that? And is the homeless coalition just a small piece or a large piece? I don't know. I mean, I don't know if it matters for your guys' involvement, but.
Yeah, well, I'm not even sure I understand the business entity that we're tied. I just wanted to put it out there ahead of time that, you know, that that exists. There is relationships here. It's a small town, you know, we're going to see that.
I don't see a conflict personally, but.
Okay, anyone else on the board have any discussion, questions about it? Okay, let's put it to a vote. Everyone, let's see. Would anyone care to put forward a motion that John Beaman does not have a conflict of interest with this site plan?
I still move, but I would add Mark to that as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's correct, Mark also.
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor that they do not have a conflict?
Aye.
Okay, and so I've got, let's see, excluding John, one, two, three, four, five, six, five.
Four, zero, two.
Mark abstained too, sorry. For the Rockport AB, can we pan a little bit more so I can see Mark? Mark is off the screen. There we go. Oops, now I lost you.
There we go.
Beautiful, beautiful. Okay, thank you. So that was one, two, three, four, zero, and two abstained, so four, zero, two. Okay, so let's proceed on with the application. And so again, just a reminder, this is a pre-application, board members. So what we typically do here in the pre-application is we'll voice any concerns we might have that we would like the applicant to respond to in the final application. Direct our attention, we're not looking for final answers, we're not looking for detailed reviews here. And likewise, we would give the applicant an opportunity to ask the board questions that they may have or concerns that may have about the board decision that would come forth with the final application. So with that, I assume that Will is there, it looks like, from Garland Dorfsky, if you want to go ahead and proceed.
All right, thanks, Joe. So I'm here tonight representing Hope for the Future and members of.
Hope for the Future that are with us tonight are Rick and Anne Breznerhan. And also with us tonight are members of the Knox County Homeless Coalition, Stephanie Prim and Becca Gildred behind me. Also joining us on Zoom is Architect Amanda Austin. She's done the lion's share of developing the internal plans of the buildings. And so we're here tonight to propose converting buildings that have been traditionally used for medical offices on Route One in Rockport. It's about a six-acre parcel on Madeline Lane. And using those for shelter, dwelling units, and then services for those people. And it's all clients that Knox County Homeless Coalition serve. And so they're a major strategic partner in the project. And the buildings themselves are going to be renovated on the inside, but the exterior is going to mainly stay as they are. The roofs are going to be the same, the footprint's going to stay the same. There'll be some improvements to the entrances, the canopies at the entrances and the handicap accessibility. We're going to make some tweaks to handicap parking and just try to organize walkways. We're trying to get ADA accessible connections between the two buildings. Right now, there's a relatively steep grade if you walk directly in the parking lot. So I've kind of tried to highlight on the site plan that we provided you some walkways that are kind of dark, shadowed, so that you can see where we're looking to make some improvements. And that would be an accessible walkway between the two buildings. We are showing a new storage building on site, a couple dumpsters that didn't exist prior to now. But again, otherwise, the entrance is going to stay the same. It's definitely an advantage that utilities have been just brought down Route One. So we've got now sewer and water that we can connect to. Previously, these buildings had private septic and wells. And the buildings are sprinkled, so that's going to make that situation better also. We've already sent copies of the plans to Main Water, and we're working with them on those connections. There's a hydrant that's been located right at the entrance. I think one question, I've tried to provide a fair amount of information. We've got floor plans in there, so you can kind of get a feel for what the building is going to be. Eighteen dwelling units in there, ranging from one to three bedrooms, and some offices on the first floors that are going to be used for providing the services. The, one thing that I'm hoping to clarify with the board tonight is the section in the state statutes regarding subdivisions. If we were doing this in new development and creating three new units, then we would trip subdivision. But the statute that I provided you does have an exception in there that if the town has a site plan review ordinance that the project is going to go through, and it addresses the issues that need to be addressed, then we can just do site plan, not subdivision. And the reason for that is, is when your subdivision is internal to a building, most of the subdivision standards just don't apply because there's no lots, there's no new lot lines. The actual subdivision is the creation of units within the building. So the important things like water, sewer, egress, traffic, parking are all duplicated in the site plan review. So that was the reason for that change in the statute that happened in 2018. So that's a brief overview, and as I said, Amanda's there if you've got questions regarding the layout of the buildings. But it's really, from passing by on the street, it'll be a pretty minimal change.
Okay, thank you, Will. Amanda, did you want to say anything or just answer questions?
I'm happy to just answer questions. We'll summarize the basic concept, so.
Okay, that's fine. The board is not as concerned about the interior space as we are about the site plan and the exterior of the buildings. So I'll go ahead and open it up for the board. Any questions, anyone has questions of clarification or concerns about this that we would want the applicant to address in the final review?
Joe?
Yes, go ahead.
The only thing that I noticed with the large number of units and the number of people that are going to be resident here, including staff and ancillary services, have you done any calculations to figure out what the impact, the number of trips back and forth? It seems to me that this is going to be quite a beehive of activity.
Actually, it's going to be considerably less than it was when it was a doctor's office.
Really?
Parking requirements are significantly less than the number of trips. Typically, a residential unit, you can figure maybe ten trips in a day. But for this square footage of office space, with people coming for appointments all day, every day, that creates a lot more traffic. But I can show you that comparison if you'd like to see it.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Can you?
Yeah, Will, why don't you plan on doing that at the final review?
Sure.
I'd like to see that comparison also.
And Joe?
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, Will, can you describe the businesses that were in there? Were they all medical offices?
I think they were. I think they were, and most of the time it was leased by Penn Bay Medical Center.
Yeah, I think because all those offices then were vacated in the new building that Penn Bay built, right? So that's why all the spaces come up.
Pediatrics and internal medicine.
Well, there was an audiologist there, too.
Yep, the sleep center was there for a while.
Huh?
I asked him to sit in the back.
No, I just, but it was pretty much a hundred percent medical.
It was, yeah.
Okay, great. And there, those, their hours would typically be, you know, eight in the morning, seven in the morning, some staff arriving through about six o'clock at night.
Yeah, I'd say generally, that's about right. Yeah, and I'm assuming, and Steph, you can correct me, but the services part of this use will be very similar to that.
Yes, absolutely. Similar to?
Similar to those hours. So there is some office space in the building on the first floor and some space for providing services and counseling and that type of thing. And so those uses will be very similar time-wise to what the doctor's offices were. And then obviously, the residential, they'll be there all the time.
That's what I was going to ask for clarification on Document Three Statement of Intention. In the third paragraph, Lee collaborated on the Madeline Lane project. So what services will be on-site? Obviously, AIO, food and energy assistance, Penn Bay Medical Center, behavioral health care. Could you go into a little bit of what will be on-site there as opposed to what is in the community that the residents will be able to tap into off-site?
Who's best to answer that one?
Steph?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, so we are actively working with Main Behavioral and Penn Bay to really bring health and wellness services into some of the offices. So it'll be sort of a rotating use of flexible space in the offices during the day on a regular schedule. Many of our clients don't have transportation. This will be their home, and so bringing services to them will give everybody greater access. Behavioral health services, just very simple concept of bringing support and services to the residents who do, who may need them.
So can I just ask you a couple of questions just around how the operations will work? Is, will these be, will these residents have leases? Or are they being provided through the homeless coalition? And are they designed to be long-term, sort of stay, short-term? How will residents be sort of qualified or chosen for units, things like that?
So our hope and intention is to allow for a thirty to eighty percent area median income participation in this. These are intended to be residences, they will be apartments. We will, we will rent them to these individuals and families. And we will provide case management support where needed, which we do with all of our clients. Not everybody needs that. The goal is to create a healthy and balanced community. That's why the thirty to eighty percent AMI is really an important.
Can you pause there a minute, Steph?
Pardon me?
Can you explain what you mean by thirty to, what was it, thirty to?
People who qualify for our Madeline Lane residences will need to fit within a thirty to eighty percent of area median income. So these units will be subsidized based on income. The majority of our clients are working, but as you know, the cost of housing, the available affordable housing here is just not available. So that's the goal with this, is to provide affordable, safe, healthy community and housing for these families.
Great, and your organization as the landlord then will be responsible for the upkeep of the property and capital expenditures and all that?
Correct, and I am really, it's really important to us that you all understand we don't look at this as just property management. This will be healthy community management and provide all the support people need to be successful until they choose to either move on to homeownership or, you know, whatever, whatever they need to do in their life, yeah.
Sure.
So.
I'm sorry? And then, no, they don't have to be, that's a really good point. They do not have to be our clients to qualify. This is, this is really an effort to provide the community with affordable housing. We could fill it up tomorrow, probably.
One of the things that I was thinking about when I was reviewing this package is that this is far, quite far away from like shopping. Even the doctor's office is quite a ways down the road. And so it's good that, to see that a lot of the services will be provided here. But will they have also, I know there are shuttles, area shuttles that provide that service. Is that going to be something that's integrated with this community?
Yeah, our plan is to, sort of a multi-pronged plan to, A, tap into Dash and to the Midcoast Connector that already exists, so to try to get us on the route once the facility is completed. But we also, as the coalition have, we now have six or seven vehicles, four vans and other vehicles. And we have a regular transportation route around to physicians' office buildings, Walmart, shopping, jobs. And so between the two of those things, we will be able to cover, to cover the transportation.
Okay, so we don't see a huge increase in pedestrian traffic along Route One?
Well, I think it's also important to clarify, just based on what was said, is that this is not designed to be a homeless shelter with more of those needs that you might need along that. I mean, these are working individuals that presumably have transportation as well.
And I guess I would also point to the hospitality house shelter, which has been running for eight and a half years. And we provide our transportation for our shelter residents, of course. And you really don't, that's not an issue on Old County Road. It hasn't been at all. I don't think anybody's seen any, anything but positive there, so.
So is the expectation that someone will rent a unit here and pretty much stay there?
Yeah.
As opposed to it's more transitional housing?
But for some people, it may be a first step toward a second layer of dream for them with a family. So if someone's coming out of an abusive situation and is starting over, this may be a runway, a year or two runway to homeownership. So it's, it'll be, it'll, it'll probably span a very wide range of scenarios.
But in essence, it's an apartment community with some additional services. I think it's probably the best way to.
Absolutely.
Look at it, okay.
And the individuals that stay here, will they typically be from around the Midcoast area?
Most, the majority of the clients that we serve or that need help finding housing, yes, are from the Midcoast. And they want to stay here. That's, that's the beauty of this, is that it's, as you know, it's so needed. And, you know, we often have to relocate families who have deep roots in this community so far away. And it's really tough for them to lose their natural supports.
We'll give a breakdown ballpark of the percent that will be used as office or wellness space and the residential space.
As far as like square footage? I don't have it off the top of my head. Amanda, do you have an idea on that?
Yeah, I mean, I would say roughly, it's about a third. If we just break down the building number two, for example, basically, the first floor of the building is dedicated to office space, to shared space for residents. In building one, the smaller building on the north end of the site, there is an office space and a conference room. So in, that one's probably maybe closer to twenty percent, and building two is maybe closer to thirty, thirty-three percent. But it's basically a third in that large building.
Okay, thank you. I'm not overly familiar, does Rockport have any SRO ordinances? Is this going to be an SRO-type project? Not, not Section Eight, but with communal bathrooms, communal kitchens?
Like, it's straight apartments, like looking at the floor plan.
Yeah, straight, yeah.
It's like straight-up apartment units.
Oh, they are, okay.
Yeah.
There's not shared kitchens, shared, okay, I'm misunderstanding, okay, my apologies.
Yeah, just thinking of like an apartment community.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, I mean, there is, I think, a shared, like, community room type of thing, but each apartment has its own.
Dedicated kitchen.
Dedicated kitchen bathroom.
Perfect, thank you. Just regarding my question.
So then, Will, on the parking, it seems like, I'm not exactly sure how the parking was allocated as a square footage originally on this, or was it based on the, as an office use?
Well, I'm not.
Does that change with residential use?
I think that, over time, when this was originally built, the parking directly in front of each building was constructed. And then they found that there was a need for more. And so that parking that's in the back was an add-on later. And so I didn't go back and try to do a calculation to see if they met the ordinance. All I did is take what's here and compare it to what our use was going to be. And I came up that we had a parking requirement of fifty-four spaces for the proposed uses based on the square footage and the number of residential units, and that we have seventy-nine spaces available.
More than half, yeah.
Yeah, so we've got a lot of parking.
When, when was this originally built? What was the, you haven't had that on?
Yeah, I was going to say fifteen years ago, I think, right? Yeah.
Other, Victoria, any questions?
No, looks all explanatory to me.
Okay.
We haven't done a site walk, and I'm unfamiliar with the landscaping looks like currently on-site. So I guess as part of the formal application, you'll have a landscaping plan.
Yeah, and we're really not planning to make a lot of changes. There's some pretty mature growth there, and luckily, the buildings are set back from Route One quite a, quite a ways. So there's a pretty good green space in front of the buildings. The only real changes or disruption will be bringing, making the connections to water and sewer, which will be pretty minor.
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah, regarding a site walk, I think that might be a good idea before the final application.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just to walk through, I have not really spent a lot of time in that building, fortunately, in its past life. So I'm not familiar with that complex.
Yep.
So that would be very, very helpful.
Yep, Mark, on the aerial photograph, you can kind of see.
Yeah, I have Google Maps up here, in fact.
Yeah, that there's some pretty mature, nice, large trees and.
How deep does the lot go back?
It's actually a little bit of an odd shape. It kind of goes back at an angle to the road, and I did include a survey plan there.
Yeah, so there's quite a bit of land back there.
There is. There's pretty significant ledge outcropping right behind the parking. And it climbs up and then drops back down, so it's not easily usable, but there is a fair amount of land still there.
Is there?
Density-wise, we've got plenty of.
Yeah, I'm just curious if there's potential to add more housing on the lot over time.
Now that there's sewer and water, that just got better.
Well, from that perspective, yes, just, but from a site design perspective, like, could it accommodate?
I think that there's possibility to do something a little different, maybe, like some small cottages type of thing, and finding ways to fit those in, but trying to do a big building and the ledge would probably be a little.
Cost prohibitive.
Well, it would just be pretty disruptive, too. It would be.
Yeah. Well, we were looking for lots along the route, one with sewer and got a lot of housing, so that's where my hat is.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So water, sewer hookup, Will, you're saying you've got, they've now got water, sewer out there, so you can run it to.
Right.
That's going to, and that's going to go through ledge?
Um, no, I don't think we need to on-site. Nope, the ledge outcrops are in the back. So I think we can bring the utility lines in to the buildings.
Okay, and I just had another question about the abutters being notified.
Yep.
Is there any plan to do that?
Yes, we talked about definitely.
That's my job, and I have not done it yet.
Reaching out to them.
It's not a requirement, but.
No, but we've got one abutter, and it's a family that is known by a lot of us. So the plan is to, is to let them know what's going on.
Yeah, so if I could just comment on that, Will, and you're probably aware of this, there is a proposed change to the land use ordinance that will be on the voters' ballot in June here.
Yep.
And that is requiring the notification of abutters. So in the event that that passed, then we would, of course, need to have the abutters notified before the final site plan.
Yep.
So obviously, if it were passed, you might want to go ahead and do that so that you were ready if you came back in June.
Yeah, and as I said, we planned to do that anyway, so.
Okay, all right, great.
One of the abutters is in a state, Killer Anne Estate, she's deceased, right?
Both of the, Tim owns the one side and his mother on the other, which I think is now divvied up between the rest of the kids.
Okay, okay, yep.
There's, there's no plans, though, to change anything on the backside of that lot along those orders in this plan, is there?
No, no, like I said, the only thing that we're doing is adding a couple dumpsters and a couple storage buildings, just so that there would be some additional, you know, there's always a need for storage.
Yep, and again, if there were any changes to honoring the easements or anything else along the side there, we just ask you to identify those in the final plan?
Yep.
I assume that, I see you have letters from the fire chief and the police chief. I don't see anything from Main Water or Sewer. I mean, I'm assuming with the new sewer, there should probably be adequate capacity for everything. Have, but have you had communications with water and sewer people?
I've had communications with Main Water, mainly because I need to work with them on sizing the lines that we're going to need for the sprinkler system. So we have been, they've got a copy of the plan, and I'm just waiting to hear back from their engineer. I haven't reached out to the sewer, though.
Where does this sewer go to?
This sewer goes to a pump station that's going to be, I think, down near the ship to shore, isn't it?
It goes up to Camden.
No, the one, no, this, this one goes to Plants Unlimited.
Yeah.
The new pump station.
And then where does it ultimately go?
Then that, that's a good question. I don't know, does that go to Rockland or Camden?
It goes up to Camden.
So that was going to be my next question. If it's going to Camden, granted, we've added this capacity, but is there capacity to take it and treat facilities?
Yes, right now.
Okay.
That's a way bigger question.
I know, but.
Good luck on that.
So I would expect that there would be letters both from the sewer authority consultant and also Main Water, again, at the final app review.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, you typically have that.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Yes, sir.
Regarding the state statute and the exemption, do we as a board need to essentially pass a motion that we are accepting the exception, or how does that work?
Yeah, so if, if I could address some of that. So Will was kind enough to provide a copy of that state statute in the package that he presented. And so Orion and I had done a little bit of pre-work here with the town attorney just to make sure that we, we understand that. And out of that, there's a clause in the state legislation that includes something called home rule. And in those cases, municipalities are allowed to establish some of their own rules with regard to some of the land use ordinances within a certain locale. If I can, I'd just like to read Phil Sosia's weigh-in regarding this particular set of clauses, which includes forty-four oh-two, which is the. this particular set of clauses, which includes 4402, which is the, the clause that would exclude subdivision review because that's an existing building. And so, I, I quote Phil here. He says, "The state's, the state subdivision law in 30 AMRS, paragraphs 4401 through 4408 is mandatory and an express preemption of municipal home rule." So municipalities do not get to decide whether to enforce that law. You'll also see in section 42, 4402, item four, municipalities are specifically prohibited from changing the definition of a subdivision. Many of the other land use ordinances in Title 30A are also mandatory, but there are some exceptions, such as the optional practical difficulty variance and the setback variance for single-family dwellings in section 4353. So, I read that, even though this is not explicitly included in our land use ordinance, it is a requirement by state law that we abide by section 4402 in this case.
So, for voting on this, and the final review, you would, so I guess at the next meeting, then the planning board would vote to review this and then make some reference to this?
Sure.
But this one, as a pre-application, there's no vote on anything?
Okay, just, just in an effort to potentially save the applicant time.
True.
Instead of going through the process and then going back to a subdivision, but, okay.
Right, right. So, I think it's worthwhile, at least for the board, to maybe provide an indication or a straw vote as to where we stand on this, so that the applicant doesn't go through a necessary effort to prepare for a subdivision review.
Agreed, that was my intent.
Yeah, right. So, I, I would, I would contend that 4402 does apply here, that the applicant would not need to be going through a subdivision review against the subdivision ordinance, and that all of the requirements would be within the land use ordinance. Anyone on the board have any other discussion or, or concerns about that?
Do you wanna poll, Joe, or do you wanna just talk about?
I, I think we oughta at least do a straw poll here, would be reasonable. And then, as Orion suggested, we would do the final vote prior to the, the final application being heard.
Could I say that I don't completely understand it?
Okay, that's, that's fair. So, ask, ask some questions, Tom, so we'll get help you with it.
I don't even know where to start asking the questions.
Okay, have you had a chance to read section 4402?
I, I looked at this and.
It's just paragraph, it's just 4402.6.
Is it paragraph six?
That we have to pay attention to, right, Joe?
Right.
That's, that's the clause specifically here, yes. It would be item six in 4402.
Just skip all the other stuff. It might be easier for you, Tom.
Okay.
So, why don't you take a minute, Tom, and read through that?
Well, I have, I have read through it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that ma, that makes it a little easier.
Joe, if, if, it'd be all right with you, I wouldn't mind just summarizing it again.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So.
I would love to hear that.
Okay, so, the subdivisions just stated simply is the creation of three or more lots is what people typically think of, but it also includes dwelling units. So, three or more units within a five-year period. And what this is saying is if you're creating those three or more units within an existing building, then it really doesn't make sense to go through subdivision and site plan review. If your site plan review in your town covers the items that it says it needs to cover, then you can do site plan review if the municipality agrees and that those standards are covered, instead of going through subdivision. And if we look at the subdivision ordinance and tried to apply it to units inside of a building.
I did hear that, yes.
We would be sitting here asking you to find all of, most of those non-applicable, you know, because there's no pins to be set, there's no boundary lines, there's no bearings and distances to be added to a plan. There's no, you know, the things that are gonna be important in the subdivision ordinance are also in the site plan review ordinance: water, traffic, sewer. And so, that was the reason they changed that. Another reason they changed it was because a lot of people were missing it. People were converting buildings into three apartments all the time and not going through subdivision. And they realized that, all right, let's fix this.
So, I have a question. I don't know if anyone will know the answer or not, but because this, the owner of this building or this new development will be a single entity and will own the whole thing. But if at some point along the line, you wanted to condominiumize this.
Yep.
And sell those units, would it have to go through subdivision review at that point?
Nope, because it's still, it's still units within an existing building. If you turned it into a condominium, though, you would have to go through and create condominium plots.
Yes.
And those would have to get recorded. So, those condominium plots, I think, still need to be approved by a planning board.
Okay, but you wouldn't actually be subdivising land because it's a condominium plan.
Right. Condominium is really just a different form of ownership.
Sure, yeah, correct. But it's all still one lot.
It's all still one lot. If we divided, if we started creating new lots or lot lines, or if we put one building on one lot, one on another, and left the back as a third lot, then that would be a different situation.
So, on that point, Will, and I'm not sure the name of the organization that's behind this project. Are they intending to do deed restrictions, you know, should, when they, is, is Knox County Homeless Coalition gonna become the owner of this eventually? Is that the intent?
The, I, I don't think that's determined yet.
Oh, okay.
I think the, you know, long-term ownership of it is still up in the air. I mean, it's a unique partnership, so I, and not, I don't think there's an exact model for this anywhere, so, as, as they.
But there's Hope for the Future LLC.
That is the owner and applicant, correct.
Okay, and so, who is Hope for the Future LLC?
That is Rick and Ann Brezner.
Tom, are you, are you okay with that explanation? Do you understand 4402, item six?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, again, just to put it to a straw vote, it's not binding. We would put this to an official vote when we get to the final application. But just to give the applicant an indication where the board is thinking with regard to this, so they don't go through unnecessary effort, let's just put this to a straw vote as to whether the board believes that, uh, let me try to pick the right words here, that the exclusion clause in, uh, Title 30A, Section 4402, item six exclusion would apply to this site plan and that the site plan would only be evaluated against the land use ordinance for the final application. I think I've got that right. So, um, just a straw vote, is every, anyone in favor that this would apply in that exclusionary clause, that that would apply? All right, so I got one, two, three, four, five, six, six, zero, okay. So, straw vote, it looks like everyone agrees here that we would only go through the land use ordinance then.
Joe, I just have one question. I don't know if we covered it at the top, but I would assume that the proposed use is allowed under the zoning for this parcel?
The front half of this, where the buildings are, is the 907 zone, and 907 is, it's permissible to have a multifamily dwelling.
Okay.
I, I did take a look at that in the, in the uses. You know, we, you go into land and number of units per, uh, given, uh, unit of land. I didn't look at that detail, but at least multifamily is permitted within this zone.
I can show you the density calculation in the full application.
Yeah, that'd be great, I think. It'll just make our job easier when we have to go through it.
Yep.
Next time. But I just wanted to make sure, at least it met, so next time you come here, we don't say, hey, it doesn't work.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Will or Amanda, any other questions for the board?
I don't think so. I think the.
None for me, no, thank you.
Okay. Board, anything else? I think we covered, uh, most of what it is here. But again, just to kinda summarize, I, I'd like to see the letters, as we usually do get, on projects of this size from Main Water, from Sewer Consultant, just saying that they can accommodate the property as it will be used. You talked about doing a, a sample or a projected traffic.
Mm-hmm.
In-house. Uh, that would be good, just to see that calculation in the final application. And that is it for me. Anyone else have anything to add to that summary list? Or asks for the final application?
Prior use of site, do they need a soil test to put multifamily?
It's going down the sewer.
No, it's going down the sewer, yeah.
But it exists prior use of site, the current ground?
It won't matter, it shouldn't matter.
Okay, when do you, when do you think you'll plan on coming back with force, Will?
When you, doesn't matter. Do it when you can do it.
Probably the July meeting, Joe.
Okay, good.
Does that work for everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, and Orion, you'll take care of scheduling the site walk before that July meeting?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's it then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would just add, Joe, to thank the applicant for a thorough pre-application. Makes our job a lot easier when.
Yeah, it does.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's why we got Will.
It's Rick's birthday today.
Thank you for my birthday present. For the free application, yes.
Okay, board members, next one we'll move on to is we've got three sets of minutes to approve, um, going back all the way to February. It looks like for February and March, Joe, John, Mark, and Tom are the only four that are eligible to vote on those, because they were the only ones present. And April, we've got Joe, John, Mark, David, and Tom. So, why don't we do the April one first, the April 28th, and then we'll go back to February and March. So, you've had an opportunity to review these, these minutes online, the draft copies. You've made, everyone's made, had the opportunity to make some markups. Are there any other comments on the April 28 minutes? If not, I'd like to go ahead and move forward and approve those.
So, what we're looking at on is, this is just all the changes from everybody reflected in this version, right, or?
Right.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the right version.
As long as it says April 28th.
Okay, all right. Um. Tom, you've looked at this?
I have, a lot.
And then I know there's no typos in there that I missed.
John's good, then.
Okay, well, somebody like to put forward a motion to approve the April 28 minutes as amended?
So moved.
Moved by David, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John, all in favor. So, the only ones eligible to vote here are Joe, John, Mark, Tom, and David.
And you.
I guess Victoria's the only one, yeah. Okay, so it's five, zero, zero, right?
Right.
One.
Okay, yes, five, zero, zero. Okay, so those.
Five, zero, one.
Five, zero, one.
Is it an extension or is it a?
Is it an extension if you're not there, though? I don't, I don't think you're.
Yeah, I think we handled it.
Not eligible.
Yeah, not eligible, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, okay, next, we're going to go to the February minutes. Again, you've had a chance to look at these, they've been red marked. So, would anyone care to put forward a motion on the February 3rd, 2022 minutes to approve them as amended?
So moved.
Moved by David, is there a second?
That, that was Mark.
Mark.
Oh, sorry, five, Mark?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Tom, all in favor. Uh, so, eligible is Joe, John, Mark, and Tom, and it's four, zero, zero. Okay, so, February minutes are approved. We're on a roll. Okay, last ones, the March minutes.
Don't mess it up, John.
Uh, March 24th minutes. Again, it's Joe, John, Mark, and Tom eligible to approve these. You've had a chance to look through them. There's a number of red marks in the draft minutes. Any other concerns? If not, would anyone care to put forward a motion to approve the March 24th? Oh, I see a problem, it says 2021. It should be 2022.
I think, I thought that was changed. No, it didn't, it wasn't.
Changed now.
It's on the copy I've got. Orion, what do you got?
I changed it.
You changed it?
It just changed.
Did you just change it, or was it there?
No, I just changed it, it wasn't.
You just changed it. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the March 24th minutes as amended and changing the date to 2022?
So moved by Mark.
So moved by Mark, second?
Second.
Seconded by John, all in favor. Okay, and four, zero, zero, very good. We got the old minutes approved and out of the way, great. Okay, um, other business?
Ordinance, oh, go ahead, Tom. I just, I have a question as to, if, if someone has reviewed the live stream planning board meeting, would that qualify them to approve or vote on, let's say, vote on the minutes? And if not, why not?
I, I would, I would think not, because they did not participate in the meeting. I would think that just beyond viewing the meeting, you would need to be a participant in the meeting.
Well.
If they're wrong.
I'm not understanding your.
I mean, is there a reason why?
What I'm saying is, the minutes are supposed to be a recording of what transpired at the meeting, not what could've transpired or would've transpired if someone else had attended. So, if you look at the, if you look at the live stream and you agree that the minutes are a, an adequate representation of the live stream, why couldn't you vote on the minutes?
My thought on it, Tom, would be, there's no assurance that someone has actually seen the full recording of the minutes, but there is an assurance that they were fully in the meeting if they attended the meeting.
Not fully.
Well, I can't account for some, some of that, but then at least they were physically there.
All right, I just thought I would bring that up, because I have spent time looking at the live stream and trying to figure out some things that I did not recall from the meeting. I mean, I saw things in the minutes, I said, what does this even mean? And I had to go back and listen and re-listen and re-listen and finally figure it out. And then I could say, okay, I modified, or, you know, through my review, I modified what the minutes said, but it was like I hadn't even been there.
Yeah, well, you could go both ways, but I think the intent is that, you know.
Okay.
You're physically in the meeting and therefore you.
Right, okay.
We can't be responsible if somebody falls asleep halfway through and wakes up at the end, you know?
Well, I was, I was gonna say, corollary to that, then, could you modify the minutes if you believe they're incorrect if you weren't there?
If you've watched the live stream, if someone, I mean, we, we have people producing the minutes who are not at the meeting.
Yeah, but actually, that's a good point, Tom. But if you think of Orion, who is not a voting member of the board, he might offer suggestions on, I, I don't think we got that right in the minutes, so it's, it's equivalent of what you're talking about, Tom, where somebody who wasn't at the meeting, except Orion would've been at the meeting.
Yeah.
So that doesn't quite work.
I don't know if Robert's rules goes into that, because it's pre-Zoom, probably.
Yes, pre-recorded video, yeah. Can you go back and review the record?
Oh, anyway, when did he pass?
I just, I just thought it might sometimes simplify things from a procedural standpoint. If, if people did not attend the meeting and did not go back and look at the live stream, they say, hey, I wasn't there, didn't see the live stream, the minutes are your business.
That's how I would look at it.
But if someone, but if someone was interested to see it and went back and looked at the live stream, while they looked at the minutes and said, yes, that's a good representation, I could, I can vote that that's, those are ac, an accurate representation of what transpired.
Yeah, it, you, you raise an interesting point of the, the person we've tasked with recording the meeting minutes that we approve is usually not attending the meeting unless they're at home watching it live, then, but even then, they're, you're right, they're gonna miss. But even then, you're right, they're gonna mis- misinterpret some things probably, as they do often.
But I think that's why the people who were there are there to review the minutes and.
Yeah, but also our bylaws state that the, the only official record is the actual minutes, not the, not the recording, right?
Yeah, the recording is actually a backup, that's true, in the bylaws.
So it's, it's, in that sense.
Well, it's very interesting, if you look at the live stream and then you look at the minutes, it's interesting to see what is abstracted from the meeting and representing it in the minutes. And in many occasions, in my case, I would've made different choices as far as what, what was included and what was.
Well, I mean, we've had this discussion before, I mean, the minutes are really only supposed to reflect what the decisions were and not all the other back and forth. And then once any of that other back and forth gets in there, then the minutes get convoluted and, and you're not really sure what you're looking at. But if it's just truly what the motions were and what the decisions, that's what minutes are supposed to be, and that's an easy record.
Yeah.
Okay, if, if we're done with that subject, I've got one other.
Eddie, Peter.
We've, we've been challenged here recently on attendance. We've struggled in three months of the last four months in having, being able to achieve a quorum. What I'd like to do is to change the way we go about doing things here. And what's been happening here in the recent past is that Orion is sending out emails trying to figure out who's gonna be there at a particular meeting. What I'd like to do is go back to the way that we did it a long time ago, maybe more than six months, more than a year ago. And that is that everyone knows what the schedule is. And if you're not going to be at the meeting, if you have a conflict, please let me know, please copy a write on that. And so that way, we don't have to keep pestering people throughout the month, the week, whatever it may be. And I'd ask that if you know that you have a conflict, it would be great to know that and let us know two weeks before, at a minimum, at least a week before. And the reason is, this doesn't happen often, but it does happen on occasion, where an applicant may bring somebody in that's from out of town. And I would hate for them to have people travel in from out of town and then show up at the meeting and we don't have a quorum to be able to review the application. So again, just to review quickly, if you're not gonna be at the meeting, a week, two weeks before would be great, let us know. Orion is not gonna be sending out emails to solicit each time who's gonna be there. We do have one new applicant, candidate for the planning board that is going to be in front of the, the next select board meeting. So that's, that's a good thing, we'll have one more individual. And I guess I might also mention here is that we do have the option of doing hybrid meetings when they're necessary. And so, for instance, in the case of someone that may have either a illness that they can't make it to the meeting or some other type of conflict, it's possible that you could connect in electronically. However, I'd like everyone to please use their discretion in that I think it's a good thing to have people live at the meetings. So unless it's really necessary, I'd really like for everyone to try to be able to come to the meetings live, because there is a lot of good, robust discussion, I think, that goes on between the board members when you are next to each other as opposed to being remote. Comments, questions?
Uh, no, that, that makes sense to me.
Okay.
Ordinance review committee, we met this morning. Joe, I still owe you the draft of the solar plan I'm working on, and we need to get that to them. Their next meeting is likely not gonna be till the end of June.
Uh, probably July.
Probably July.
More likely.
July, so are you shooting for trying to get that on in November, then, that ordinance change?
Solar, oh, for, for November?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yes, I did it back, yes.
Okay.
Anything else that was planned or related this morning?
No.
No, okay, that's all I got.
What's on the, no, that's all for planning board?
It involves that, yeah.
Something else? Okay. Okay, anyone else, other business? If not, we'll, we'll adjourn. Orion, you have anything?
The, the only thing is that we gotta work on a work plan, so if there's like the ordinance review stuff, you know? So it's just the.
When are those, when are those due?
They were due a long time ago, yeah, so. And it, it doesn't have to be anything much, I mean, just like highlighting the big-ticket items that the board wants to accomplish outside of, you know, the general round of.
Would you ask the review committee, probably if you may have any ordinances that we would like them to?
Right, I mean, something like that. I mean, if there's other things that the board wants to do.
Who do those have to be turned over to?
The select board.
The select board?
Yeah.
Via Diane?
Uh, me, so me, and then I give it to John, John, then.
For the planning board?
The planning board.
But all, all committees and all boards are supposed to be doing this, right?
Yeah.
Orion, maybe to get some ball rolling here, what I'll do is I'll work with you, I will put together a draft and I'll post it on the planning board, sheer point, and at least as a starting point, let others comment on that.
Sounds good.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay. Your congratulations to Orion on his win.
Yeah, congratulations, that's right.
Welcome back.
You don't look any different.
I know.
He's got some circles on his side.
Ask him in a few months.
Oh, my gosh.
So, John, if this is, is or is not your final meeting?
Not my final meeting.
Okay, sorry.
I guess I got one more.
Okay.
One more bite at the apple, as the lawyers would say.
Do you have anything on the agenda for the next meeting?
What? Anything on the agenda for the next meeting?
I mean, I'm just curious if anyone's come before you that.
Oh, no, no.
Nothing on the radar.
Maybe you'll have nothing to do at the next meeting.
Yeah, maybe.
We could party.
With that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Hey, is there a second?
Second.
Who's second to that?
David.
Everybody's voting, right? Okay, all in favor. Okay. So the meeting's officially, officially ended at six twenty-seven. Thank you all. Yeah, thanks. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.